Run. Where the cookies? Gee, so sweet.
I don't know what we're looking at here.
Yeah, here on camera. Then we came. What's the other bit?
The auditor, she's not elected.
It's my caller bag.
We'll call meeting to order. County Commissioners Court setting in regular meeting Monday, February the 11th, 2019. It is 9:30 a.m. Make note that the meeting was posted in the manner of the fourth time present that all members of the court present. If it's convenient, please stand. We have a recommendation, please, I believe.
That's right. And Father, we just ask you to bless all those that are present this morning. We ask you just to bear our presence this morning. God direct us as we face issues to better our county. Father, we just ask you to bless those that are lost loved ones. Especially want to bless the family of Ken Andrews for he has served this county so well. Father, we just ask you to lay your healing hand on those that have been sick and ailing with the flood. Father, we just ask you to forgive us where we fail you. And we ask you to work your will in our lives. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item number three, public comments now. Presentations. As Mr. Rogers indicated in his implication, make everybody know that the loss of one of the county judges, Ken Andrews, happened late Saturday or early Sunday. And I believe he was still in Fort Worth in three days, if I understand right. Services and arrangements have completely been made, yes, have not been posted. I don't know, Marshall, do you know what funeral home was that?
I don't. I just got out of the box a while ago. I'll load later in the morning.
Please keep the Andrews family. Ken served as county judge for part of one term of around eighty-eight, ninety. And then he was elected. He was defeated in the ninety-one general. Then he was elected again in the general election of ninety-four. And he served two terms as county judge. Previously, he had served as county attorney, I believe, also. So he's got a pretty long run with county government, local government. Please be thankful about the Andrews family. Next item I have on the agenda is a letter from our Veterans Commission regarding twelve hours of annual training completed by Wayne Callen, veteran service officer. And I make a comment during that, too, that applications ended on Friday, February the first, I believe. And we have four, looks like, pretty qualified candidates that will address in the very near future. Next item on here is Historical Commission Annual Financial Report, 2018. We need to get in the record. We've got Julia Cox and Susan here to give us that report.
Hi, John.
If we'll turn it over to whichever one.
Okay.
So whichever one goes first.
I know we've had a really successful year. We've had more activities building on what we did last year, and we look forward to next year achieving even more. There's a couple of marker events that are coming up this year, because this year will be the fifth annual Friends of Fort Belknap Days at the end of October. And one of the things that we were looking into, although not presenting formally yet, was to get a type of a banner or something to advertise since we've got our fifth year is coming up. And to get more interest in it, get more advertisement for it. And that's something that we'll be looking into very shortly. Another thing that's coming up very quickly is we have a historical symposium over Britt Johnson, and that's going to be March twenty-sixth and March twenty-seventh. And we're inviting writers and historians from the area to come and put all of our brains and research together, what we found about Britt Johnson, and also to proliferate the story. He's quite an interesting gentleman, achieved quite a bit in history. One of the things that, oh, it's the March twenty-second, twenty-third, sorry. So, yeah, well, one of the things that we're also working on right now is that the Britt Johnson historical marker out on Gene Highway was hit by a scraper. And right now, we're looking into different resources to see what we can do about getting that repaired before our historical symposium. And...
Is it still unprepared?
It is unprepared.
I'm going to make comments to our local highway department if they cannot assist. There should be the law building.
Like James Sticks, those pictures from last week.
I was wondering if it tore this out.
Yeah, right now, we're working on getting it back up where it needs to be. But we're also, we're going to start the process. Yeah. Start the process for repairing the sign or something.
I believe that I made that request for that. I believe I've given that information to Zach. I'll field follow-up on that, so I'll be there.
Okay. We can follow up if you have.
Seventeen sixty-nine, right off seventeen sixty-nine. Yeah, just before.
South of the intersection of Brown and Longway.
Keeping with that symposium, the Historical Commission is one of the major sponsors of it. And so one thing we would want to do is sponsor the meal on Saturday. We're expecting possibly between fifty and hundred and fifty people coming for the two-day event. And so we really want to be...
And that's going to be held at?
The Friday event will be, they'll do a historic tour. Hopefully, we can get Grandma ISD to give us a bus and let us transport everybody to Mass. Then we go to Ballcat on Friday night, and they'll have them there. And then Saturday will be at Fort Belknap. And so we'd like to have, you know, food on the ground, and that way, nobody has to go in there. So that would be our contribution logistics and...
They're paying for the Friday, and so what we're looking for is something that everybody on Saturday probably is going to do that.
There'll be a big feather in our cap if we can do this. There are lots of people watching us to see how successful we are with this symposium.
Good.
So no pressure.
No pressure. Y'all will do great job. The commission has been, the Historical Commission, the young guys have been pretty active here lately. Appreciate y'all's time and efforts in that. It's been quite productive. And we appointed new membership, I believe, at the last meeting of the calendar year in December.
And we lost some good members, too. Good attrition. Louise McCasky passed away last year. And, you know, I mean, she was so forceful in the nineties. But we're hoping that army members can step in and step up.
Who?
That's pretty much it. We did have a few donations come in. We, of course, had the donation from the winter products that we'll see. And we had another monetary donation come in at the end of the month, December. And then we've kind of been, as we find historical books that think pertain to the Historical Commission, we've had some donations of books come in as well. So that's been good this year, too.
One last thing I'd like to add is this, we really need some type of internet presence and at least a reference of how to get in touch with those who are non-honest. And I'm wondering if there is anything that we might be able to, as far as the county goes, maybe just being mentioned or something on the website and contact everybody else.
Possibly our own email address, so that when we do finally find someone to replace us, you know, we can just hand that email down instead of it always being on our personal stuff.
Since we contribute to that, can we put them on our website, on the county website?
Yeah.
Just make a link?
Just put a link on, yeah.
Okay.
That's it. Looking forward to next year.
Thank you all, hard work. It's really looking good out there.
Thank you for this work. Really appreciate it.
You have a rich, uh, this packet.
I think there should be a packet.
Can you put it in there?
She did. Timmy takes care of us.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank y'all. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else, any other matters that need to be addressed? Masani College Auction.
Masani College Auction, March ninth. Do you have anything to put in the lot? Please let us have it, so that we can get it in the advertising brochure, so that we can have, give notification to folks what's going to be there and what's going to be for sale. Looks like it's going to be another big auction. We appreciate all the support in the county. And matter of fact, we're going on, we got, sent out fourteen hundred past buyer notifications to three different states. So we've got buyers from all over, brings a lot of visitors in. Once again, this goes for our scholarships that we give. Last year, we gave eleven thousand dollars in scholarships. And these are not all for our four-year college scholarships, either for technical schools as well. So any support we can get, we can exchange your stuff for money and space. So a lot of more people need more space than to do anything else, so, anyway. And anybody who has a nonprofit organization that would like to gather up things and bring them out, and we'll sell them, give you the money, and that way, you don't have to spend the whole day trying to sell a garage sale or whatever full of stuff, and we'll just get rid of it for you. Nothing, nothing goes back to anybody. It all goes away out there. So thank you very much. Appreciate that, Judge.
Anything else?
Yeah, well, out of the board out there, we pulled the rest of the poles and cut them and starting to smooth it out and bringing, help all of it to sand and kind of level that one area out, because it's like a big hump there, and I think it's just catching water. Then we can figure out how we can start putting up a structure.
What about the thing I'm very long right there?
It's like coffee filter up there.
Has anybody talked to, so there?
I've talked to Garrett, and we're going to have a sit-down, talk to him.
And then I've been waiting. Amber out there is talking to Michael.
Michael Cook.
Michael Cook. And she's saying that A&amp;M wants to come out there with their engineering group and do that as a project. So it may be done for us, if they can do that.
Oh, resources, none of this is bothering me. You point out that grapevine to visitors there and show them, of course, they think they're looking at a nut tree.
He'll come back.
Moving forward. Item number four is Consider County Clerk Minutes Previously, January twenty-eighth and thirty-first, respectively. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections needed to be made on this?
Till it is.
Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers, to accept those minutes respectively as presented, on paper. Here, five-oh. Consider Treasurer Financial Report, updates on security design.
January's on balance, and tax money is coming in strong. Right now, we have three million, seven hundred thousand plus in the general. And...
Could you like transfer?
Anyways, everything's looking good.
We had a pledge of, what, two million, one hundred and ninety thousand?
Hold on a second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pruitt. Second by Commissioner Wiley.
Yes.
To approve Financial Report as presented, on paper. Back up to the referee, I was going to say, is I've contacted professional tree and landscape person, they have a certified arborist on their staff. He's going to be down here this week, maybe even this afternoon, but sometime early for this week. And we're going to walk the grounds here, and he's going to give us an estimate of what it would take to do what we think we need to do. And I'll bring that report back.
Okay. You have that previous report that was written for us that was sent to Governor Hubbard, didn't it?
From Fort Belknap?
No, for the courthouse.
Well, no, no. When was it sent?
Sent to you, sent a month ago.
We viewed it through the court system. Yeah, it showed different things that need to be cut.
Yeah, just illustrate what needed to be done.
Yeah, okay, I remember that.
He was a certified arborist or somewhere. But he did not have a copy of the actual...
It's going to be, it's a cost-free estimate.
So it's...
It's approved by the Woods Falls Texas Tree Specialist or something like that. Okay. Item number five is Consider Treasurer, all we've just done now. Item number six, Consider Auditor's Budget Amendments and Vouchers Paid.
I don't have any budget amendments, but we always have vouchers. The total today is one hundred and ninety-three thousand, four eighty-seven ninety. And out of the general is one hundred and twenty-two thousand, six thirteen thirty-nine. There is some bonus payment in it. I have our Omni Annex Annual Payment in here, Mr. Beathens, Campaign for Humane Society a little bit, a few other things.
So moving on. Okay, nice. Wiley.
Thank you.
Pruitt. To approve Vouchers Paid, as presented, on paper.
Aye.
There have been no amendments. Amber Nicole Jones, previously Johnson. I'll think on that bond, I'm not sure what...
That John's going to be told.
But that's one of the same. Assistant County Treasurer, an amount of five thousand dollars. Joanne B. Dickey, JP, number one clerk, an amount of five thousand dollars. I believe those are done with you.
Good move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight is Consider Extension Agent Justin Rogers, Kenny Baron, January report, request for reimbursement, Justin Rogers, an amount of six forty-two forty-six, and Kenny Baron, in the amount of three thirteen seventy-eight.
I'm moving on.
So that's Wiley, Rogers, Sykes. All in favor? Item number nine is Discuss Consider Tax Resale Deeds, around the Port of O'Neal College Lot, that's some twelve oh one. Gamera, Ollie, Texas, bid amount of eleven hundred dollars. Two oh four West Cherry in Ollie, bid amount of thousand fifty dollars. And four ten West Main Ollie, and a bid of two thousand dollars. Rogers. Motion by Commissioner Wiley, second by Commissioner Rogers, to approve tax resale deeds and execute the same. All in favor?
Aye.
Five-oh. Item number ten, Discuss January Activities, Court for Jail, Sheriff, Sheriff's Office, along with offender transportation reimbursement.
Good morning, gentlemen. Sheriff, is he right there? Okay, sure. Sheriff Abcock and investigator Stewart are involved in a case at the moment, so he couldn't be here. So I apologize your stuff for me today. Go over patrol first. As you can see, a total of sixty-one calls. Civil process deputy is making some headway. He served sixty-seven papers, which brought in fifty-nine hundred sixty dollars. Twenty-two arrests, three hundred and fifty traffic stops, thirty-two citations, total mileage is eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two. It's an estimation.
That's collectively a roll within?
Of the, that's of the patrol. Arrests made of drug related were three. We had eight grams of methamphetamine seized and sixty-two point six grams of marijuana seized.
We had a recent meth seizure this past weekend?
They did.
They did.
But I do not have any amounts on that.
Was it a traffic stop or, you know?
Yes, traffic stop in...
Very day nine, huh?
Any other questions about that one?
Three hundred and fifty traffic stop?
Lot of traffic stop.
We have a couple of guys that are really...
We got some rookies, huh? They're learning.
Lot of them up in my house.
Busy.
The population this morning in jail is seventy-three.
Wow.
We, Baylor County contacted this morning, they're going to bring us another one, so that's going to run our total up to seven.
Of theirs?
Of theirs. We averaged sixty-seven last month. We took eight to TDC. We went and picked up two more. We got thirty-three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents reimbursement from the state. We had our normal MHMR. We didn't have any that we transported to hospital or whatever. So I know patrol had one they picked up, but they weren't, couldn't find a bed. Finally, I think they were released to a family member.
Is that not high for MHMR appointments?
Well, about half the population in the jail at this point are seeing MHMR and are on some type of medication. I've got about thirty-four inmates that are seeing MHMR for some type of counseling or medication or...
So they're planning that out.
Oh, they are. They're learning that under the, under the Sander Bland Act, that we have to do these things. So a lot of them will go down there and get an intake, and once they actually see the doctor, and they find out they're not going to get any kind of drugs, then it usually plays out, but we have to go through all those steps anyway.
What kind of costs and time does that cost the sheriff department?
Well, you figure it, every time we go down there, it's three miles, a mile and a half there, a mile and a half back. So we did that twenty-six times.
Times of load and unload and hours.
It's anywhere, one inmate takes up about an hour and a half or go down there and do an intake visit. Now, they'll come down to the jail and see, five or six of them at one time. And if they, if they mark those questionnaires to the affirmative in certain areas, then they automatically get to go see the doctor and get an intake, whether they get services or not. And of those twenty-sixes last month, only fourteen of those are actually going to receive services and get some kind of medication. The other ones are either going to have outpatient counseling, or they were denied because the doctor didn't, didn't think they needed, or they could help them.
Well, there was recent testimony in Austin from the Cook County, County judge, said the Sander Bland Act was costing Cook County approximately a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year.
And that's very possible. We haven't seen that increase yet, but we probably will. And by twenty twenty, we're going to have to have cameras in all of our impact, high impact areas, which, two more holding cells, all the detox cells, or, I'm sorry, the sex cells. And I'm, I'm asking for bids on that, but they're extremely high at this point. I haven't found anything that we can...
Yeah, no state assistance whatsoever.
We are too big. You have to be ninety-six beds or less in order to get the brand. So we are, we're a hundred and forty-four beds, and we can't even apply.
This reimbursement that we got, thirty-three eighty-seven, what time period is that covered?
That was September, October, and November.
Okay, timely.
Well, you know, they tell us, once we submit it, they have forty-five days to pay us. I didn't even know it came in, because it's now automatic deposit.
There was no notification or anything, it was just there, and I was like, what is this?
Used to, they sent us a notice. We got a notice that the money was, or they sent a check originally.
Right.
And then they started sending us notices. Now they just appears in the bank account. So all I can do is let her know.
Start reconciling the bank debt, you really don't even know it's there.
Because they didn't, usually they send us a notice on the state page, but it wasn't
But this is at least for you out there.
Yes. But at least we're starting to get those checks again. So we still got December and January to file them now. But at least we're starting to get those checks again, so we still got December and January to file them now.
Yeah, they don't do them monthly anyways.
No, it's quarterly.
Okay, this is quarterly.
It's supposed to be, but.
We used to do it once a year, now it's not quarterly.
Yeah, but you can't, they won't let you do it once a year anymore. You have to, you have to turn it in by a certain time in order to get your reimbursement. So.
Took you past the deadline, you won't get reimbursed?
Nope. You know, and you do, it's better to go ahead and send in what you have and get that. Because if you have one late in the month, and you can go ahead and send it in with the next quarter, and they'll pay one or two, but they're not gonna pay. They're not gonna pay a whole month's worth if you miss your deadline. But that's over almost ten thousand dollars. For most of last year. And like I said, we still have December, January that'll, that'll go in.
They will do, pick that up on the extended ones now.
They will. Oh yeah. But I meant their timeline to get it in before the end of the cutoff, so, but like I said, that's why December and January didn't make that.
Do you submit them electronically now?
No.
We still have to send that.
We still have to mail them in.
There's another way to solve that.
It's a, it's a two-page form, you have to fill out with. Even the license number of the car that you transported them in. They, they change, that's what I said, last year, if y'all remember, they changed the form, they changed the way we did it. They wanted a lot more information, so you fill out those two pages, and you give them what officer did it, what vehicle, and the license plate of the vehicle you did it. From Grand to Huntsville, or whatever unit it went to, and then you're supporting documentation. Because we get a receipt when we take those people in, they give us a receipt that they've accepted them. So we turn in the ship order along with the receipt with our voucher. And then you mail all that in, and then they go through them and.
It's about a pack and about an inch thick.
Who does that series for?
The what?
Who does that work?
I do.
You do, how long does it take you to do it?
I, I try to do it each month, so when I get to the, the time of smelling in.
Sure.
It's already done, but it's like, like even an elephant, do it one by the time. Yes, sir. But you, you have to, you have to meet their timeline, having in, before the fifth of the, of that month, or you don't get your money. But you just try to do it monthly.
Like you do anything else with your paperwork and.
Sure. Get it turned in, but thank you for that information.
One comment that legislature is in session, and the shell game's still operable. And they will be trying to balance the state's budget on the backs of the local entities.
Oh, they will.
That's what's gonna be.
Exactly right. Anything else, Tim? Thank you, sir, thank you.
Item number eleven is discuss consider pricing supplement to increase price of service from a hundred and ten dollars to a hundred and sixty dollars. For ICSO agency subscriber agreement between TransUnion Risk and Alternative Data Solutions Incorporated and the agency for the county would be.
And we've been paying a hundred and ten, but this is something that, that the org uses.
Well, I can learn, I understand it, but.
This is a tool, an investigative tool, we've been, we've had it for years. Twenty thirteen was the last time they increased our price. What this does for me is, I can pull up every address these persons had, every phone number this person's had that I'm looking for. I can pull up their neighbors, their relatives, every vehicle that they've had. I can use that to go back and track down people. It's not always the suspect, I was looking for a victim that ran off from us. She was running from other things, not from us, but we were gonna lose the case if we didn't find her, and I was able to track her down. They sent me the information, so I passed it on through, it was gonna go up another fifty dollars.
That's a year, that's a month.
That's a month.
Month, huh, yes.
Five hundred, five hundred.
That's probably six hundred.
Forty percent increases.
It will give me five hundred searches a month. That's the lowest that they have. I'm going to add it to my other two investigators, because the last few I've been running twenty-five thirty a month.
We get a report every year, every month when we get the bill, and I print it off, and I mean, on what you did. It shows that he's using it a lot.
But I'm.
Clearing, I'm under what? Clearing me up a little bit, John. So the ones you marked here are the ones you don't necessarily want? Did that work?
I think it came on.
Maybe it's what you currently have.
No, this is what I, this is what I already have. The excluded ones are the social media, the super reverse, the driving values. That is excluded, yes, sir. Right, and that's what I already got.
Is it virtual?
Yes, sir.
We're just gonna already.
Yes, it's an investigations.
And it comes out of my investigations account. And I think, I think we have enough in there to cover it, but what's gonna happen is I'm going to have one too many autopsies, one too many something. Something, it's gonna catch up somewhere, because we get it budgeted for sending it in, dump, and everything else to have it tested, all comes out of the same account. So, we'll have to make adjustments.
So this is one account that other multiple officers use this?
Yes, sir, yeah, I can have as many users to that as I want. I had limited it, I didn't realize I had five hundred lookups. But since I have that, I'm gonna go ahead and expand it to all the deputies that are investigating.
If you don't use them all, do they carry over, or is it?
No, sir, they just go away, so.
If you go with five oh one, then they charge you for that one.
Then they charge you for that.
Right. So he's just gotta keep up with his research.
There's no danger of us.
I mean, you normally search a month, really twenty-five, twenty. Oh, okay, so you're.
I've actually underutilized it, because I was worried of being charged, but since I had the conversation on, I was like.
You were the one on.
Yes, sir. Yeah, everybody can come to me to run, so this way I can spread it out.
This is effectively being operated by a credit reporting firm?
Yes, sir.
Credit Union?
TransUnion, yes, sir, and.
Credit reports don't give us any information like that?
The what reports?
Credit reports.
I assume they would give us quite a bit of that information, but I don't think they run those for free either.
They charge for credit, but it needs to be in a.
I just wonder if that information is on the credit report, or we're basically getting an enhanced credit report?
Basically, I'm getting, yeah, that, but.
Is that the financial?
I think what it's set up for is more of the bill collector type stuff. And so we're, we're utilizing their, their back channels to get all that.
Well, that's the backside of the credit report, they also wanna know how to find you if you don't make payments too.
Yes.
Still need to increase in trades.
An annual increase, we've already got, so that's annual increase, six hundred dollar.
Yes, sir.
Guess it'll be with you that much this year.
No, sir, I don't think it goes into what.
Um, yes, thank you first, I'm.
Well, motion of Mr. Wiley, second permission to enter into agreement with TransUnion Risk and Alternative Data Solutions. For investigative searches for Young County Sheriff's Department. All in favor?
Aye.
And that, that would be five oh, and that would be for an additional six hundred dollar annual cost. Three hundred and fifty dollars for this fiscal year? Hundred and sixty dollars per month, increase of fifty dollars per month. Three hundred. Something like that. Item number twelve, discuss consider price quote carrier AC and boiler repairs. Been down here looking at boiler units and services. John, do you have anything for this, this factor? Do you have any she needs to pay?
No, sir, she just came over with, maybe on that matter?
Yeah, wait a minute.
Okay, no, she just gave over with.
Now I gotta holler at you.
Hey, John?
I'm gonna holler at you here in a little bit, I'll call you.
You want me to say it?
No, I'll just call you.
It's cool.
Okay.
Okay, price quote carrier, air conditioner carrier for AC and boiler repairs, that's in your, that price quote's in your. These are services outside of the, of the maintenance agreement that we have with them, that they determine needs to be. We don't have any maintenance agreement on the boiler units. They live on the AC unit, and that covers some of their ordinary maintenance things. They have performed a few services there without charge, inspections and things like that. On a, they're needing to, one, take fire chambers, I guess, or burn chambers. Or clean them out, or get codes that indicate a trash within the system revealed. A system which has been affecting our on and off, we haven't lost, we haven't lost usage, but we've had one or two boilers go down. At different times or at the same time, we've always had one that stayed on line. Number one boiler that we recently had evidently sent the signals to the other to turn on or off, or whatever. So it was, it has been out of service for a number of days in a row, it's currently in service, I think. Got it going back, and we have third, the last one on Cascade, I guess you call that. On that Cascade went down the other day with the, the same code. And they checked it out, and it was difficult, I don't think, to get back going, but they got it back operating, but they do think that they can clean those burn chambers. And I think that's what most of the cost is, there was, there's a part on the air conditioning unit that was out.
Contacted.
And they need to replace that.
What our agreement was with them, of course, the fellows out there, man, the way we installed them, I thought our agreement with them was is to come once a year. And come flush the systems, all three of them. And that hasn't been, been done, and you've gotta do that on those, on the main water heater. Or. We had it with carriers.
Well, I don't think we've ever had.
Not really, maybe Charles was coming and doing it.
Charles was coming and doing it, my point was, he was doing it.
Yeah, he was doing it.
And keeping up with, but this Charles is not here anymore.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
And the one that replaced Charles has since left.
So he's already gone too.
But we did have a new guy out of, is he out of the metro plate?
No, I, I don't know, I think they were out of which top laws, but.
He seemed very knowledgeable, I think he was a good source for us, I was.
Yeah, he was, I thought he was, I don't know what his name.
Didn't we have a problem with these ones before? I would make a suggestion.
Look at our pipes, look at the water.
Is it the water?
Look at our ice machine.
Is put in a, a water softener.
All of our plumbing and.
And that would help keep that stuff clean, and help keep our pipes clean too. A water softener system, it'd also help on our units inside here.
Well, that's, that's gonna get jumped with water, part of it.
Well, that's what causes the buildup in those heat exchangers.
Well, not in those burn tanks. Water chambers are. Is it the soot and the, is it? They run around them, doesn't go out, that's, that's just fire time where the gas.
What's coming out of those nasty pipes?
It does make a difference.
Is it, is it the water pumps that are bad, or is it the gas, the burn chambers, where the gas is burning and heating the water? That's what I understand needs to be cleaned. Yeah, sounds like they're burning improperly, then, they're too rich or too lean or. If they're sooting up, need to be cleaned, they're running too rich. Anyway, they have shut, shut everything down to open those up and clean them, so.
I'd ask the fellow's advice and see what he says about it, though.
Excuse me?
I'd ask his advice on it, about putting a water softener in the system.
Yeah, well, I'll do that, I mean, that's, we did have the circulating pump, and it was, it went down on. During one of those thunder lightning storms that we had, so I suspect that that was an electrical surge or something like that. It tripped the switch that maintenance man, nor I was aware of, and we were trying to reset the system, but we weren't in the right. Spot in the box to reset that, so it didn't really take anything to, to reset the proper button. And it reset and went circulating again, but when the pump goes down, that's gonna cause the boiler to shut down too. But I'm pretty sure that's gonna be an electrical, it was an electrical surge or brief outage or something, tricked that, it was during one of the storms.
I'm confused, Jimmy, I thought we had some kind of maintenance agreement where they did those, you did too?
They were coming, they were charging us.
Cause I thought we were paying them.
They were coming down and servicing that, flushing the system. That was on the, usually was done in the late fall, when we were changing from the cooling system to, to the heating system.
It's usually once a year, next year, so there was.
Charles, but all of these, all of these things that they're quoting here are outside.
Any kind of maintenance.
Outside, and even maintenance, but the way they have. Were they a result of lack of maintenance? No, I don't think so.
So look at the pipes. Look in the toilets, look in them.
Well, those, that's the water feed supplied to us. On that port door.
Ten to bed.
New chambers, they claimed before on that delivery. They're really particularly good water operating, but it doesn't take much to knock them offline. I mean, fluid pressure in your water filter system that circulates around the heat chamber. Any kind of gas fluctuation, power outage, surge, if they're, they're real sensitive.
We probably ought to go down there and see if there's any of that piping in there that.
Only done.
Necessary.
Another instance will be getting a little giant blind, they wish. I, you discussed it a few weeks ago. Cut all that out, I came down, cut all that out, put the water back in it, and it didn't take, I bet it didn't take. I'm here two and a half hours, so.
Three.
So all of that's repaired and up and running. And they were going around.
They're being moved back.
There wasn't any urgency or anything, they had, they had a pair of plumbers that they sent right down. They were pretty quick with it, so it wasn't a very difficult fix. They were only down about three hours. Here physically, I'm not including the travel time back and forth.
But I think we ought to get some, look at that system, some stuff that they cut out and, to make it less funny. What it was when you had a border center.
We only inquire about a water softener system.
Yes, sir. I have our piping in this home building here, right?
We're gonna watch the players in on the repair agreement with regard to the boiler AC.
So what? And then we need to talk to him about getting him on the annual setup, and he does come some month, once a year. He has our maintenance on the board.
Well, motion of Mr. Wiley, second permission to approve, approve to approve the carrier repair quote for air conditioner and boilers. With Carrier Corporation. All in favor? With Carrier Corporation. All in favor?
That was also put in court by the byboard. Quote. Byboard quote.
Item number thirteen, discuss considering like medical services contract agreement? Mitch will out there?
Oh. He said I'm good. He and I have worked on this off and on. We wanted to do it a year ago. We.
Then we're gonna do it during.
There are just so many things and stuff come up, and it's just now, it's, it's just the time to take care of this.
Our contract, I think, reads that this kind of self-renewal unless somebody wants to change it to get out of it, not my thirty-day notice.
Yes, sir. Just thirty days. Notice, we have, we went into this, we, you know, thought this would be a really good idea, and it worked well. In the beginning, we had some, some issues of, just little issues here and there, but our cost in the last, really the last year has started back up on us. And some of the services we have not totally been pleased with. At the time, we had, you know, a couple of other people making proposals and Mitch and I sought out. The kind of look and see what we could give that would be a little bit in our situation for us, and one of the original people come in and. Bellmout family, which would be Joe Clark. Joe started in the jail straight out of high school as a jailer, you know, and went through all the motions, and he's now a PA. And he will supply us the nurse, the five days a week, four hours a day. He will do blood draws, which we no longer get. He'll do TV tests, which we no longer get. And when it all comes down to it, right off the top, will save us right at fourteen thousand dollars.
That's, is he giving us a?
He has.
Set fee quote?
Yes, and it is hundred. I bid. He has worked as a jailer. He's been to the jail. He's. There he is. I was lucky he was here behind.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, Joey knows the ins and outs and in-banks, and it's just.
He's handled, he's handled that.
Right.
Quite often. I just, at this point, we need the nurse, the same nurse that Mitch has, you know, can work with on day in, day out. We don't need just nurses, different nurses coming in. That way, he can get them structured on what he needs them to do. And we don't currently have that situation and haven't had that situation.
Not since they took Manny.
And I think he'd be less susceptible to seeing people to ER for no reason.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which would save time on the.
Which, at this point, is costing us a lot.
Is that with the increased cost of our emergency visits?
Well, it's not just emergency. It's all the tests where, I mean, they got a hangnail. You know, I mean, I've, we've had to take two to Wichita Falls to have colonoscopies because they made claims that they were bleeding.
Defensive miss?
And so everything.
A podiatrist to cut one's toes.
To do what?
Cut his toenails.
To cut his toenails.
I mean.
Cause they couldn't do it or wouldn't do it.
Things that we had previously taken care of in the jail, no longer, we seem to.
The fourteen thousand you're talking about saved us?
Right off the top.
Over, compared to what?
Okay, we, in the other contract we had, right off the top, it's thirty-five thousand to the nurse and twenty-five for.
For doctor.
For Dr. Vince, which that will, the nurse will basically break down into sixteen.
I said fourteen.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Thirteen, three.
And we will have these same nurse. Plus, Joey has really studied the Sandra Bland Act and will work with Mitch on making sure all of that is the way it needs to be and keep us out of trouble. He understands all of it. He's, he's just, I, I would like to try this. I really feel like it would save us some money, keep us. Just the blood draws, the TV, all of that will keep us in, out of the emergency room quite so much. We're utilizing it quite a lot. And the specialist, I mean, he sees through a lot of things. Not that we don't want to get our inmates scared, but we wanna get what we. Provide what we have to provide.
What they're in need of.
Pardon me?
What they're in need of.
Exactly.
Well, we're required by statute to do life sustaining. You know, toenail fungus is not life sustaining.
I was gonna really tell the doctor my ass.
Okay, and so we, we've kind of gotten away from taking care of their needs and doing whatever they, they come, oh, this hurts, that hurts. You know, and everything we have to go to a specialist, and it's just gotten out of, out of control.
And I can't tell the doctor, we can't tell the doctor, we're not sick. If that doctor says.
If he writes an order and says they need an X-ray or they need it, we have to do it. I have to comply. I don't have any, and I, I can sit down and talk to him and try to explain to him, and sometimes he listens and sometimes he doesn't.
It's gotten really bad in the last six months.
Well, we've, we're spending a lot more money that I think is unnecessary.
And inmates talk, and I know they can take advantage of the system.
And when they, and they know when they can.
Right.
And I think that we're gonna get, we'll get back to where we thought we needed to be with Dr. Clark. And that's what we're requesting. Try to get our.
I think it's an up round.
So you're requesting a cancellation of the contract that we're currently under and.
Accepting.
To.
And we have to give them thirty days.
Thirty days, right. And we don't want any laps.
We need a MD out there.
He, he works under MD originally. When we started this, it was a PA. Only recently has it been a new D. We've had, when we did get a MD, every, that's, we had, that's when we started with all the specialists and all the.
Well, we have that in the agreement all the time, you know, MD.
Well, the MD oversees him, so.
The MD will come out for him.
Yes, he will come out. He will be coming out, just like. Well, he was, he is like what our original contract called for when we started out with, we used Rachel Coriel. We had used the.
All our practice.
Oh, we used all our practice.
Does he have an offer on his staff?
Yes, he is on staff.
He has to. He has to work under him. He works under Dr. Shepherd out of Jack's Brown. It's who is, is managing physician.
The real estate group.
Right. So.
Does that comply with all Sandra Bland Act definitions?
Yes, it will. Yes, it will.
And, and when, and just let you know, before Dr. Brown came on, when Dr. McKenzie was sick, that's what they were sending us anyway, was the PA from the clinic.
And you think of like Tyler County or Dallas County, all of them, all of them have nurse practitioners in their jails.
They have their employee there. They have nurses and nurse practitioners.
So that's what we're doing, basically.
Right.
Don't have an actual doctor in the jail, nurse practitioners.
We just, this time, this is the best fit. He will come, everything will be complied for. He knows the rules. We'll get back our stability we once had. With the program that we feel like we've lost to, and it's costing us more money right now than we anticipated.
Still gonna have the relation, work relationship with the hospital.
Yes, I still will have a good working relationship because they are a hospital district, and they understand that we have to have that relationship.
I'm making a motion that we give them thirty days notice on the contracts that we are in, as we speak. And at the end of that thirty days, we will get back. We go tell that kind of practices, give the address down to the clinic. And then propose.
I haven't because this is what I was told. This is the way it's gonna be. When I said, well, but we're, this is the way it's gonna be.
I wonder if you've already questioned some of these influences.
I have, I have, and I've been told that this is how it is. So.
It's under a different situation.
Pretty stern.
This is it.
That's the way this group is working out here.
I mean, there just was no give.
I'll second that motion too.
No give, I mean.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Wiley and the second commissioner Pruitt. To give thirty days notice to Grand Family Medical Clinic of the, I guess that would be Grand Regional Medical Center.
Well, it's family, it's the family clinic.
Family clinic is part of.
I know.
Did thirty days notice of cancellation of our health agreement. And health insurance agreement. Get y'all out. All in favor? Five oh.
Yeah, I wanna provide the best services for them that we can, but I also want to think about the taxpayers.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
But their proposal needs to clear thirty day cancellation.
It will.
Right.
I agree with that.
I've already, that was part of the, we have a thirty day out. We, we're not, we're not asking.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna dry out there. Item number fourteen, discuss.
I'll say the right.
Little damp. Can I ask for a ten-minute recess?
Well, we're, I don't, party's on here yet. I told them, I gave them notice of eleven o'clock.
You want that thirty minute recess?
Reconvene.
They'll be here, we'll. Our last item is a closed session for economic development. That's cited by five fifty-one one oh eight seven Texas government code. We'll allow the closed session. We're gonna have. From companies proposing.
Have they already started destruction? Have they already started destruction?
No.
You got a rain gun?
What?
Got a rain gun?
So, we're gonna be in. He's got a rain gun.
He's got a rain gun.
We'll go back and open session with all order and we'll roll the three men.
He's in big band with you.
Ladies and gentlemen, you sir. Is that contract going up?
So, yeah.
Senator Malley, I'm enjoying the electoral section of this place. Good to finally have somebody.
Judge.
In tune with the community.
I have the policy from lives.
Turn it all off.
Okay. Judge.
Record all.
Do you need to sign this?
You need to have paperwork where they can.
If y'all saw what I fill out every month.
Does it work over the last ten years?
I fax nine sheets every month just to the jail commission. One, I have to email, and it has to be in a spreadsheet, and it can't be a copy. It has to be the original spreadsheet of one report. And it has to go to a particular inspector. All the different, the only difference is, is you take that, that form, it's in a.
You're doing electronics, aren't you?
Yes.
And you print it?
And they call that the original? No, no, you, you don't print it. You do it online. You do it, and you attach it to the email, and you send it in.